I'd like to call the morning session of the March 6, 2023, meeting of the Johnston County Commissioners to order. Welcome each of you who are here today. We have a packed room and those who are watching on our YouTube livestream, welcome. As is customary for our meetings, we will begin with the prayer followed by the pledge. And I've asked Commissioner Fred Smith to lead us in the prayer, and we have American Legion Post 141 of Selma that will lead us in the pledge. So if you would, please stand.
Oh, Lord our God, we recognize that you are the great Creator of God who has created everything. What is man that thou art mindful, but you are mindful of us? We know that you love and care for us. We thank you for your providence, that you take care of us. We thank you so much that we have opportunity to live in the best country in the world and to live in this great county. We now just ask that you would be with us today as we do the business of this county and the people of this county, and we ask that you give us wisdom and discernment and judgment to create a results that's pleasing to our citizens and to you. For we pray all this in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just turned the microphone a little bit there. I think you turned the microphone and then there you go.
That whole thing swivels.
There you go.
We're here today because of our legionnaire friend and family member Ted Godwin. We're going to submit him with his certificate of 25 years of continuous membership from Post 141 in Selma. Here's your pin, sir. And we would like to thank you for your service today and all the work that you have done for our post and for the state and nation. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all. As we're kind of all getting situated, I did want to remind folks in this board that last year roughly this time, we set six priorities for this board. They were public safety, infrastructure, our county employees, financial stewardship, educational funding, and land use. So as we go through this agenda and every agenda, I just remind folks to look for those six priorities and that we're trying to address one or more of those in each one of our items and then move the county forward. So with that, I will go to the first item on the agenda, which is approval and/or discussion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We move the 911 Communications Request to Adopt Resolution from Item Number Seven to Item Number Four.
All right.
I second it.
All right. We have a second. A motion and a second to move Item Number Seven to Item Number Four on the agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We rearranged the agenda there a little bit. Also, next up is consent agenda items. We have nine of those this meeting. They are approval of the minutes from January 17th, our evening meeting, order to advertise tax liens, additions to the DOT system. We have appointments to the micro planning board. We have an option agreement for the Hughes tract, and we have request to discard equipment from public utilities. And then we have budget revisions for economic development, health department, sheriff's department, and emergency services. And then finally, we have an item for the sheriff's office to take and approve the sheriff's bond amount. And then finally, we have tax releases and refunds. Any changes or need to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. The discard equipment, the utility, the, what does that mean, discard equipment? I understand it's not worth any salvage value. We're saying somebody just picks it up and takes it off.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what would happen. Somebody's going to pick it up and take it off and get rid of it for us. It's junk. Thank you, sir.
I'm fine with it. I move the consent agenda to be approved.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next item up is public comments. Is there anyone wishing to make public comments before I read all the disclaimers that go with that? And it's for an item that would not be on the agenda. Nobody in the hall? All right. Yeah, the deputy just checked for me. So and Madam Clerk, are there any?
Somebody's coming in.
Oh, we got one. Okay. All right. I'll read the disclaimer before you get started here. How about that? So this is a time for any audience member to come forward and address the board on an item that is not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes for your statement. And if you would, please state your name and township that you're from. And we ask that you maintain property quorum and keep your comments civil during your discussion. And this also reminder that this is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public and not an opportunity to engage in public discussion and debate. So with that, I will return it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam Alter is current president of Blue Line Aviation, reside in the town of Clayton, obviously do town, do business in the town of Smithfield. Just want to come share with you guys and the and the public about some of the good that we're doing with our scholarship that we have coming up. I'm sure you previously heard about our Fly Right Scholarship. We're going to give about $100,000 to a local graduate of the Johnston County Public School Systems to attend our program and do some real good for them and their family and their future. Quick update on that is we're hoping to go live on April 1st and start accepting applications then. And we're currently in the final stages of searching for folks who are going to serve on the board of that and help select the the awardees of that. So asking you nice people to consider if you're interested in that, you can send me email, adam@blueline-USA.com with your intent or to serve on the board, or if you know anyone who would be a good candidate to do that. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Madam Clerk, do we have any emails? Okay. Then I will now move to what was formerly Item Seven and have a request from the 911 Communications to adopt a resolution. We have our 911 Director Brett Renfro here to make that, open that discussion for us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come and stand before you to present a resolution that I would request that you consider for approval and submission to this state initiative and ultimately a federal initiative for reclassification of telecommunications from basically office and administrative support personnel to true public safety protective service occupations roles. Before I go any further, I'd like to take a moment, and this is just part of my staff that stands behind me.
I was going to ask if this was everybody.
No, it is not. It is not.
I'm looking on the screen and you can't see everybody else.
No, no, it is definitely not, Mr. Chairman. These are the people that make the magic work. They support the department in various ways. The telecommunications answer the call for assistance from the public, no matter when it is, where it is, or what it is. We work very closely along line with the sheriff, with his telecommunications, with his department. Just a blessed asset to be able to serve and do the things that we do with your support. And this job would not be possible without these people behind me. They are the ones that get the job done. To classify a telecommunications in the classification of office administrative is not the proper place for that. If the public generally sees if they call and their home is on fire, they see the fire truck pull up, they see the firemen jump out and put out the fire. But before they get that fire truck, they talk to one of these people. If they call for an EMS unit and they need a paramedic or an EMT, when that paramedic or EMT and that ambulance pulls up, they've talked to one of these people first. If they need a sheriff's deputy or a police officer from a local municipality within the county, they talk to one of these people first. We are the first line of defense for the county with regards to public safety. And public safety in Johnston County, you mentioned the priorities, Mr. Chairman. It is a priority, and we appreciate that because we take our jobs very seriously. And these people behind me and all those that work for myself or work with my, work with me and our department and with the sheriff's department, EMS, emergency services, I don't want to leave anyone out, is truly dedicated to their job, and they do an awesome job day in and day out. With regards to the resolution that was prepared and placed in your packet, this bill was introduced in the 117th Congress of the United States by Representative Norma Torres from California. It was passed in the House. It was also proposed in the Senate, US Senate, Senator Burr, who is no longer in the Senate. It failed to pass the second reading of the bill, and it has essentially died. The bill is now dead. But we are, not just we, as in Johnston County, we're a small piece. We're one of 126 piece apps in the state working toward this resolution of support to the state and then the state essentially up to the federal level to get the classification changed in the standard occupational classifications through the federal side. So as of last week, Senator, Congresswoman Torres agreed to reintroduce the bill. It will be reintroduced in this 118th Congress in the US House, and formally will go forward to Senate. It has a lot of bipartisan support, and I am asking for a local resolution of support to move forward. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions or concerns.
Any questions before Vice Chairman Harris reads the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I've got just a couple of comments that I found very interesting. These individuals are the unsung heroes, that they go quietly every day, and they answer those calls. And that's where the every single emergency in this county initiates from these people. Interestingly, when the fire departments are rated by the North Carolina Insurance Rating Commission, ISO, this communication center out of 126 in North Carolina scores a perfect score, the only one in North Carolina that scores a perfect score. Think about that for a second. Out of 126, Johnston County is the only one that scores a perfect score every single time, which benefits our departments, our citizens, their insurance rates and so forth. Additionally, they have triple accreditation, international accreditation in emergency medical dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, and emergency PD dispatch. They were the first in North Carolina to obtain all three accreditations and the third in the nation. That's something to be proud of, and I'd like to give them a round of applause for that.
Amen. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that there are jurisdictions in this state that you hear on the news of having all kinds of problems, not answering calls, that type of thing. And that just shows how superlative our group is. I commend you.
We had a lot of good leadership over time to do that through various department heads for 911. Jason Barber recently retired, and he was a very good part of all the things and helped lay the groundwork that we are continuing to carry on as we go forward.
You're a humble man, Mr. Renfro. But you're doing a great job. We appreciate it. Without, I'll read this resolution. Resolution supporting the reclassification of Johnston County 911 dispatchers. Whereas in September of 2021, US Representative Norma J. Torres and Brian Fitzpatrick announced that their 911 Saves Act passed the House as part of the fiscal year 2022 National Defense Authorization Act. The 911 Saves Act is a bipartisan legislation to reclassify 911 dispatchers from office and administrative support to protective service occupations in the Office of Management and Budget Standards Occupational Classification Catalog. And whereas 911 dispatchers are the first line of response during an emergency, and they deserve to be classified in a way that recognizes their work on par with the work of other public servants classified as first responders. And whereas Senator Richard Burr introduced reclassification bill in the United States Senate, where it remained, and whereas 911 dispatchers are working with elected officials to reintroduce this legislation with the next Congress and local support will assist in this effort. And whereas the Johnston County Board of Commissioners is in support of this legislative change, now therefore be it resolved by the Johnston County Board of Commissioners that the Johnston County Board of Commissioners is in support of bipartisan legislation to reclassify 911 dispatchers from office and administrative support to protective service occupations in the Office of Management and Budget Standard Occupational or SOC Classification Catalog adopted this sixth day of March 2023. And Mr. Chairman, I'll enter that in the form of a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of the resolution, please say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. We appreciate your diligence and support.
And I think y'all want to come up and get a picture.
If we could, if that would.
That's right.
We don't want to tear your business too long, but it's very important.
You brought this many. We need to come up here and get a picture.
That's right. Plus, you'll make us look better.
I just wonder who's minding the shop.
Yeah.
I can probably, there's somebody down there.
All right.
She's the rest of my support.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Fine job.
Good to see y'all. Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Appreciate it, sir. Appreciate all you do. Correct. Thanks, sir. We appreciate it.
Remember that cold hand I still want.
Good to see you, sir.
You do a fine job.
I think as Mr. Renfro mentioned, that was an item that did deal with one of our priorities in public safety. Next up, we have partnership with children with the proclamation for the Week of the Young Child, April 1st through the 7th. And I would say that was, this one is probably related, since we do provide some funding, to educational funding for our children. So and is it Mr. Burrell or Burl? It depends. I'm from the western part. We said Burl.
We say Burl as well. Good morning. Thank you so much for your consideration for declaring Week of the Young Child for April 1st through the 7th. This week highlights the work that we do for children, their families, and those who care for them, and their teachers. As you may know, 85% of the child's brain is developed in those first five years. So we want to lay a strong foundation for their future success, and we thank you.
Any questions, comments? Is that, I was trying to see if that's in our, is that in our packet or?
Proclamation.
Yeah, the proclamation. Would you like me to read?
Yeah, if you would. That's what I was going to see, somebody to read it.
Where's the, this is proclamation, Week of the Young Child, April 2023. Whereas the Partnership for Children of Johnston County Incorporated, along with other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child at times to promote the needs of young children and their families and early childhood programs that serve them because the first years of life, of a child's life are the period of most rapid brain development and lay the foundation for all future learning and success. Whereas children's cognitive, physical, social, and emotional, and language and literacy development are built on a foundation of children's positive interactions with adults, peers, and their environment. Whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society, as participation in high-quality early childhood education saves taxpayer dollars, makes working families more economically secure, and prepares children to succeed in school, earn higher wages, and live healthier lives. Whereas high-quality early childhood education depends on high-quality early childhood educators who ensure that children, supported by families, have the early experiences they need for a strong foundation. Whereas the majority of these costs, which often exceed the cost of a year of college tuition, are borne by parents who often can't afford it. Whereas young children need early childhood educators who are incentivized and supported to provide high-quality care to those with high and special needs. Whereas working families need robust subsidies, scholarships, and tax credits for families at all income levels that support the true cost of quality early childhood education. Whereas early childhood educators need the ability to earn a family-sustaining wage that is commensurate with the required education and skills they bring to the complex and variable work they do. Therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 1st through the 7th, 2023, as the Week of the Young Child, and hereby encourages all citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood in Johnston County. Mr. Chairman, I've moved that we adopt this proclamation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have a request for Phase One Fire Matrix implementation, and we have the Chief of the Cleveland Fire Department, Chris Ellington, here to introduce this. And I'll again add, as one of our six priorities, public safety is yet again on the docket today. So, Mr. Ellington, or Chief Ellington.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come today and present Phase One of the Funding Matrix to you again and make a formal request. As you know, we started work on this back when we were doing our, our fire study with the county and going through things and trying to determine where our next step was for our departments. And one thing we realized was we have departments that we need, that need assistance. Phase One covers our Tier One departments, and those departments are departments that do not have an income of at least $300,000. We feel that that is the base minimum that those departments need to function and provide the public safety that their communities deserve. In this request, there was some money allocated through 2% of the fire tax collected goes to, was going to services to collect that. That was allocated to this. That was somewhere in the neighborhood of about $300,000. This morning, we're requesting that Commissioners consider our request for additional $308,977 to completely fund Phase One of the Funding Matrix. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to, glad to answer those.
Any questions for Chief Ellington? Comments?
If I understand, Mr. Chairman, you're saying, Chief, that those funds we allocated amounted to some over 300,000, but the real need at that time and continues to be around 600,000 to meet the need?
Yes, sir. The current need right now is $608,977 to make, to implement Phase One.
Do you have a listing of what stations, what districts they would be?
Yes, sir. The qualifying departments that were identified are Bentonville Fire Department, Bethany Fire Department, Blackman's Crossroads, Micro, Strickland's Crossroads.
If you recall, when we adopted this current budget, we waived that 2%, which equates to the 300,000, some change that the chief mentioned. And so what we need to do today is to try to make up the gap so they can go in, start sending this funding out to the departments so that they can, they can move forward with a lot of very needed parts of their activity.
I might add, just for the benefit of our listening audience, that this is no fault of those particular, those fire departments. We, the lines are drawn to maximize the insurance ratings, and it's really a product of the tax base within that area. So those, those areas with low tax bases are the ones that don't have the income.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think if we're serious about this, I'd like to make a motion that we add the additional funds and go ahead and go forward with Tier One. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I would just add that we recently had the request from Blackman's Crossroads and then for a little additional time to us to evaluate the contract, and a lot of that dealt with the training, which as I understand it, this will help support that training and for our rural fire districts that you just mentioned, that there will be a great benefit to those departments and subsequently to all the people who are serviced by those departments. So that's my two cents on that. But I think it's, it's well needed. I know there's a lot of work to do and a lot of considerations for future funding on this board's part. But I do think at this time, this will, will kind of get us jumpstarted and headed in the right direction, particularly for those rural fire districts that we just mentioned.
This will definitely be a game changer for those departments.
Yep.
Sustainability is going to be, is a big issue for all of them, and this is going to be one way that's going to help them do that.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All, and I'm assuming that funding will come out of the general fund? Okay. Just wanted to make a clarification on that. So all those in favor of the motion approving the allocation of $308,000 from the general fund for support of this Fire Matrix, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all. Thank you for work all the chiefs are doing, making this come together.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's see. Next up, we have some discussion from Director of our Health Department, Dr. Marilyn Pearson, on our opioid settlement funds.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to again say this one, it seems like we're having a public safety kind of morning here. So I think of our priorities, this one would go under, under that one as well. So.
Good morning. I am here today. You have a resolution in your packet. So we are requesting your approval to enter into an agreement to accept additional funding, supplemental funding for opioids, the opioid settlement here in our county. As you may recall, last year, we brought a resolution to you to accept a little over $8 million over 18 years for Johnston County to deal with the opioid epidemic here in our county. We had a preliminary plan that we put in place and received your approval in September of 2022 to use 309,000 or so dollars to implement that preliminary plan. What I gave to you today updates you on where we've come and what we've done thus far using some of that funding. I did want to introduce our team to you. One part of that plan was hiring a part-time opioid settlement grant coordinator, Ken Ratliff, who has an extensive background in mental health and substance use with the state and locally, is our grant coordinator. Camille Fullwood, I think you've met her before. She's a health education supervisor. Mary Banks is a health education specialist, and Samantha Patrick, a new member of our team. So that is our team that is leading this process and working with our opioid task force to implement the strategies that we have put in place. I also want to thank Jennifer and Chad and Rick, who are, of course, handling the monies coming in and being sure we do what we're supposed to do with the funding. So just to give you an update thus far. So, just to give you an update thus far, you can see here, as I mentioned, we have, we have hired our part-time grant coordinator. We are working on the evidence-based addiction treatment part by working with Commonwealth Health. We're talking with them about implementing medication-assisted treatment, so that's those who may be opioid addicted, and trying to work with them to do some telehealth services here in our county. We're also talking with one of our partners in Wake County about doing some detox, and we're working on that, so that'll be a part of this additional plan. We're training some of our staff at our behavioral health unit to provide some addiction counseling and services there, and we have a peer support specialist application and process that we're doing. Those are people with lived experiences that we're going to be working with so that they can connect people who may have opioid addiction or other problems with the services we have here in our county. We're working with the Post Center for Health Education to provide some education in our community, with our families, our parents, and our children. They're going to do a Drugs Uncovered session in April. I invite all of you to attend that. It's an interesting session to see what a room looks like and where drugs can be hidden in rooms for children, et cetera, that we don't think about. So, that session's going to be in April, so I invite you to attend that. And we've purchased some naloxone and providing that to multiple different people here in our county, so county residents can get that for free from us, but we've also provided some to our fire departments, all of our fire departments here in the county, and our law enforcement. And then, last but not least, we're talking with our emergency management team and Kevin Hubbard about a post overdose response team with our EMS. So, those are things we're working on right now. We will be coming back to you with more details to update that plan because we will have some additional requests for using that funding. But today, I'm just asking you to approve the resolution.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Pearson? All right. I hear a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we adopt the resolution as presented in the budget, in the agenda.
I think there's a second part of that.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. Motion, amend the motion. Adopt the resolution, approve the supplemental agreement for additional funds.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All right. Any other discussion?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we want to receive these money? Typically, when you're asked to have a resolution to receive it, are there tags along with it, requirements, that type of thing?
I will have our county attorney.
Okay.
There are requirements to receiving this money that are outlined in the supplemental agreement. The supplemental agreement is, is really no different than the agreement that was previously approved, which essentially says that you have to receive this money, put it in a special revenue fund, and that it can only be used for evidence-based opioid mitigation strategies. So, that's essentially what you're agreeing to when you receive this money.
Nothing negative, just play by the rules.
That's right.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Dr. Pearson, you're going to be at the Alliance Meeting tomorrow, 2:30?
Yes, yes, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. And I did want to say, no matter how many times that I write down, when we have a Commissioner that's not here, I'll forget it, and I'll put it at the top, and I skip it every time, but obviously Commissioner Tony Brazel's not here today, he had some issues to take care of this morning, and I think he will be here at the evening meeting, so one day I'll get that at the right part of the meeting.
We should have reminded you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Any help is appreciated.
We were thinking on Tony to do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so now we'll move on to our infrastructure-related priorities, and we'll ask Ms. Shandra Farmer to come forward and address, I think, the next four items on the agenda for us. Good morning, Ms. Farmer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first item that I have on the agenda is related to our Austin Pond wastewater pump station project. This existing wastewater pump station located at 200 St. Giles Drive in Clayton currently collects wastewater from our county retail service area along Cornwallis Road, north of 42, and then also from our Winston Point development. We provide bulk water service to Carolina Water Service for, for that development on Winston Road. This existing pump station currently allows us to collect that wastewater and divert it to the county system for treatment or back to the town of Clayton along Highway 42 West. And our previously approved capital improvements plan includes a project to expand this pump station. The proposed project will have the ability, will improve the station so it will have the ability to pump in both directions, to the town of Clayton system or to the county system simultaneously, and will also increase the capacity of that station. Our consultant has already completed a preliminary study, and we are requesting to establish a budget in order to complete the detailed project design, and it would be for technical service throughout project completion. The total amount's $306,000, and the proposed funding is our Fund 68, which is our wastewater fund balance. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You anticipate this pumping primarily to Clayton?
It will pump in both directions. It will be two, two separate, two wet wells, one will pump to Clayton and one will pump to, back into the county system.
Simultaneously? Okay.
Yes. And it'll be needed to pump simultaneous, long-term, in order to meet our contract requirements for, for the bulk wastewater services we have. Right now, we receive less than, it's less than 100,000 gallons a day from that Winston Point development, but over time, the contract allows that to go to 500,000 gallons a day, so it could increase quite a bit. We have to be ready to meet that need.
What is the tentative construction date on this?
Well, with project design, we're starting the detailed design now. Likely, we would start construction in '24, mid-'24.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Farmer?
I move that we adopt, we appropriate the funds for the budget, for the project budget and associated budget revisions for the Austin Pond pump station.
I second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Timothy G. Broome Water Treatment Plant Construction Management and Maintenance System initiation.
Yes. In May of '22, the county submitted an application for an asset inventory and assessment grant to the State Division of Water Infrastructure. We were chosen to receive the grant. The state has awarded the grant to the county. It's a $200,000 grant that will allow us to implement this construction management and maintenance system, which is also an asset management software at our plant. We have completed a request for qualifications and selected a consultant to assist with this process. We previously have gone through this process in our collection and distribution systems to implement the software, so we're familiar with it, and we're confident in moving forward at our, at our plants. The proposed project budget, as I said, is $200,000 from the grant, and we recommend an additional $50,000 from our water fund balance, which is Fund 67, to ensure completion of the project. We're requesting approval of the proposed capital project budget and the capital project ordinance.
Any questions for Ms. Farmer? If not, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget and the budget-associated capital project ordinance for the Timothy G. Broome Water Treatment Plant Construction Management and Maintenance System initiation.
I second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have Central Johnston Regional Water, our wastewater treatment facility, CMMS initiation there as well.
Yes. This is similar to the water treatment plant. We received another grant of $200,000 to implement this at our wastewater treatment plant. So, I don't usually get to say we have grant money, so I'm excited to say that we have an additional $200,000 for the wastewater plant project. We then have an additional appropriation or estimating of $90,000 from the sewer fund balance to complete the project for the network modifications and any other software costs that may be needed. We're recommending the total capital project budget of the $290,000 and requesting approval of that along with the capital project ordinance.
Any questions? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the project budget and approve the associated capital project ordinance for the Central Johnston County Regional Wastewater Treatment Facility Construction Management and Maintenance System initiation.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, we have Timothy G. Broome Water Treatment Plant, 14 to 18 million gallon a day, design-build-expansion project, sole source request for that.
Yes. Our design is well underway for our proposed design-build expansion at the water treatment plant. This will take our plant from 14 to 18 million gallons a day. The schedule includes a 30% cost estimate by early April, so we anticipate that very soon. Our engineer recommends sole sourcing several components of the project, and not only does the engineer recommend it, but county staff request this in order to ensure we can maintain standardization and efficiency for operations. You can see the list there in front of you. It's our cluster filter equipment, belt filter press, and several different types of pumps, along with our conveyor system. Certainly, when we start working on and maintaining, you know, 15, 20 pumps at a time, it's helpful to be able to keep stock on hand, pieces and parts, when we can maintain this type of standardization. There's also a letter attached from our engineer supporting this request, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, during our agenda review, I raised the question of, was adopting this direction with sole sourcing painting us into a corner? In other words, are we, are we tying into like Ford, Maiden, Edsel? And, and that's not the case, so therefore, I, I moved that we approve the identified sole source items at the Timothy G. Broome Water Treatment Plant, 14 to 18 million gallon design-build-expansion project.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think this is a good thing because when you have people familiar with a particular supplier, and you start bringing on you, and then they got to be trained all over it, it's better when you keep continuity going.
Yeah. Absolutely. All right. I did have a question. So, is any of these, are all of these impacted by supply chain issues that we're avoiding delays?
Not that we are aware of, but what we are doing on this project is we're working to have several early equipment packages, so we'll be able to start, the ones that do have long lead time, we'll be able to start procurement early on in the process.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion and a second on this item for approval. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. So, next up, we have delinquent tax collection report from our Director, Jocelyn Andrews, Ms. Andrews. Now, I think we, this goes under the financial stewardship category for our priorities.
That is correct. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good to see you. In front of you, you have the January collections report. As you can see, we are moving right along, and moving right along with a lot of things. As you are aware, we have started our 2025 revow process, which is not a quick process. We, now, our vendor is on site, and cars are hitting the roads, so we are encouraging citizens that are seeing cars, that maybe they don't understand, they're welcome to call our office. There is signage on their cars that explain what they are, and it has our telephone number. We encourage them to call us, and we'll be glad to, you know, talk them through it. They are starting in the eastern part of the county, so that, that way, they understand, and they're, they're getting their feet wet, and, you know, they, they are using the equipment properly and all of that, and then they will move to the more densely populated areas as they, they learn the equipment. But that is happening, there's a lot going on on the other side, and I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Yeah. Jocelyn, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I always like to make sure I got this right, okay?
Yes, sir.
If I, if I read this correctly, our revenue from our real estate and personal levy from '21 to '22 is approximately $12 million increase.
Yes, sir.
From 157 million to 169 million.
Yes, sir.
It's just entrepreneurial math, not accounting math. And that if I look down on our motor vehicles, we've gone from about 10.9 to 11.9, so there's an additional $1 million there.
Right. Almost a little over 9%.
Two of those make up about a $13 million increase in revenue.
Roughly, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In my part-time work with the bank, I look at a lot of recent real estate transactions, and I've seen news reports where other counties that have had recent revaluations have surprised and troubled public, and I'm afraid we're going to run into that too because the prices I'm seeing for real estate transactions are just, it's really going to hit this levy hard.
Let me address that, because we're going to get into that. The value of the real estate will not determine the taxes that the people pay.
I understand.
It's the mileage that you put on that rate.
Right.
And we control that, and we control whether we keep it revenue-neutral or whether we do that as a shadow goes tax increase. That'll be a decision that we have to make. The market determines what the property is worth.
Good point.
Accurate. Very accurate statement. The goal right now, and what we are working very closely with our vendor to do, is to determine what each property looks like, and, and when I say looks like, in other words, what improvements to already each property. And then, it will come to determining what the market looks like as we get closer to that January 1st '25 date. Once we get there, and then we start assigning values based on the schedule of values that y'all, this board will adopt late in '24, then it will determine what the value, the tax value is compared to the market value, which it should be the same as of January 1st, and that is our goal, to make it the same thing on January 1st to '25. Then, that gives y'all some time, this board, some time to determine, again, what the tax rate will be, and for the various townships to make that determination for their purposes as well.
I'd just like to say, I think we're one of the greatest tax departments in the state.
Yeah, I agree.
I've got a great team.
I'm putting right up there with the 911 people. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Got great people.
All right. I can't top that praise, so I say thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All, next up is managed report and comments. So, Mr. Hester, what do you have for us today?
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted, Mr. Adrian O'Neil, who does a great job with our parks, greenways, and open space, he and I have been talking about some possible grant opportunities, so I thought it might be good, if you don't mind, for a couple minutes today, if he could kind of update the board on some of those, knowing that will apply, if the board's okay, will apply for some grants. There may be matches that are required. This is not obligating the county at all that would come back to the board, so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. O'Neil.
Good morning.
I'll say we have one of the best parks, guys in, in departments in the state as well.
Let me say, we got one of the greatest grant guys behind me, and he's over in the office today working on, working on grants as we speak, but we've got four that are coming up that we are very interested in making work and bringing some money into the county. The first one, we spoke about a little bit earlier at another meeting, is the paved trails feasibility study, and that is East Coast Greenways, Mountains and Sea Trail, looking at the section from Smithfield to Benson. And that one is an NCDOT grant. It will be around 118.5 is what we'll get, what we've applied for, and we've already talked about that match in a meeting, so that's, I think, $5,928. I think we all agree, that's a pretty good turnaround, 118.5 thousand. The next one we've got on there, and that, that first grant is a study to show target routes and things like that, feasibility, which will tell us how much it's going to cost or project how much it's going to cost. Now, the cost of trails right now is astronomical, we're hoping it will come back down a little bit, because if you build a trail in Raleigh right now, it'll, it'll cost you about $2 million a mile, and we're hoping it won't cost that much in Johnston County. But we are pretty close to them. The second one that we've got on here is a North Carolina Land and Water Fund Grant, and we're looking at that one, and that will be associated with the Wilson Mills property that schools is working on right now, and that we'll be a partner in. There's a lot of wet area on that property, and what we want to do there is apply for a grant that will hopefully total about $1.1 million. Basically, it will lock down the area you can't do anything with anyway, the wet areas on that property, and our matching that, if we get it, will be a land match, so there won't be any cost out of pocket other than what we've already So there won't be any cost out of pocket other than what we've already paid, and hopefully, we'll get $1.1 million of that back, which will bring that total cost down to something like $3.1 million for that property. So we're working on that one right now. The Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, which is one that we hope to start applying for almost every year. Now, we won't get it every year, but that's the one that we bought the part of the land in Cleveland with. We've got a half a million dollars from that. And we can match that with other grants as long as, well, we can match that with almost any kind of grant. So a lot of times, there's no money out of pocket for that one. But what we hope to do in the next couple of board meetings, we hope to present a master plan for that park, and we intend to apply for some of the first phases in that master plan, which will be grading and utilities and paving. So that's what we're looking at there. And there may be some matches in that that could potentially come from the open space fund. But we also may apply for LWCF, which we can match Land and Water Conservation Fund with that Parks Recreation Trust Fund, so potentially, we could have no out-of-pocket money working on that park for at least the first million dollars. And then the last one is a LWCF, which is a federal grant. And that's, anytime we apply for it, it's a half a million dollars, has a half a million dollar match. The main one, we use that one for, we could use it for development on that park property once the master plan is approved. But also, if we have acquisitions throughout the county, that's one that we can use for that as well. So those are the four we're working on right now. The Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and the Land and Water Conservation Fund will most likely come every year, and we'll try to apply for them every year, because we want to leverage as much money as possible in that way. And then the North Carolina Land and Water Fund is one that we work very closely with TLC, because sometimes they have a project that is just a better project that they're applying for. We don't want to compete when we've got a project that's not quite as good. And when they have a project that's not quite as good, we want to be the ones up front. So that's, that's what we're working on right now, and if you have any questions about those, we'd be glad to answer them.
Other than the town of Clayton, how many miles, feet of trail have we got completed in the county now?
Not very much. The master plan that we're working on over at the Cleveland site will include about 4.2 miles on that site, if, if it's approved. And then with the Wilson Mills School property, we can put in about three miles fairly quickly, and that'll be East Coast Greenway, Mountains and Sea Trail. TLC is working on a property right now that depended on if we could get a bridge across the river, that would add close to three miles. So in that, Wilson Mills to Selma, to the edge of Smithfield, we could really pretty quickly put in six, seven miles.
Are you trying to coordinate everything, so you run into the towns, some of the towns' trails they already have in place?
Yes, sir. Well, and that's another, you know, we got a grant last year that we'll start working on, or the, the plan will be started hopefully in the next month or two. It's another DOT grant, and it's a countywide Trails and Greenways study. So we're gonna look at all the counties around us and connect it to their trails. We're gonna look at all the parks we currently have, all the schools in the county, and all the development in the county, and try to strategically put a spider web across the county of potential trails. And in doing so, that feasibility study will also have a component for developers to be able to know what the county expects for a trail. It'll be a technical guide. So when they build a trail through one of the developments, then the county could accept it as part of the open space for the county, and they can turn over maintenance to us, or we can do an agreement on maintenance. But we have some, we, we want to make sure that those trails are built so that the county taxpayers not, you know, five years down the road, they're not getting stuck with a trail that just doesn't work.
Sort of like DOT accepting development streets.
Correct, correct. And that's, that's another grant we did. We actually applied for it almost two years ago. DOT is a little slow on those, but we, we have, we've gotten that grant, and it's a little bit of the same thing, it's about 118, and we'll have a $7,000 match on that one. We're working, it just moves kind of slow right now. We are in the, here the trail, which is good, and we've got some upcoming opportunities that I think will be beneficial.
Mr. O'Neill, thank you for your extraordinary leadership in that. I think it's really moving that program forward very well, and we appreciate you.
It is very enjoyable in this county.
I had a citizen, had a citizen mention to me some suggestions about some open space that could, should be pushed toward. I'd like to talk to you about it, so let's get together this week and talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now we go to the board reports and comments, so I always start this way, so Mr. Brazel?
We had a meeting week before last in County, just to kind of get together, get to know everybody, and I thought it was quite interesting to see the, the great planning and citizen considerations when they, they designed their new campus on some land out there, and that was quite impressive together. And I just wanted to point out that as we look at our stuff coming, going forward, you know, I think it creates a certain amount of citizen pride when you've got good facilities to go to. I mean, even, even I, as an outsider, felt almost in awe with some of that. It wasn't, it wasn't grandeur or anything, but it was very practical, very functional. And it's kind of, you don't have to go to nine different offices to take care of something. A lot of convenience for the taxpayers there.
All right, Mr. Godwin?
I'm currently serving on the Alliance Mental Health Board, and we've had a lot of issues with, with needing some facilities, specifics facilities here in the county that would affect DSS, the hospital, and our citizens in general. Commissioner Harris has shown a lot of leadership in pulling together people from those various areas. And we got a meeting tomorrow with Alliance here in the county, and hopefully, something good will come out of that, and maybe looking at ways that we can create those facilities and run them appropriately, so it wouldn't bog down the hospital or DSS personnel. More to come.
Vice Chairman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also appreciate Commissioner Godwin's leadership on the Alliance Board and, and working cooperatively with all of the folks involved to try to do something to help this crisis that we have in the county. And I, I feel good about the progress we're making. We're certainly not there yet, but we're, we're well on our way. On an additional note, this morning in the consent agenda, we approved the option to purchase 47 acres. And I, I would like to have some discussion with the board about possibility of instructing staff to put out an RFQ for design services for the DSS building and a administration building at that property moving forward, so that we can expedite this as swiftly as we can while still exercising due diligence.
All right, yeah, and I don't know if we can take that up at this time, but I think that's probably something that, that now we have the agreement is to start looking at ways and actually even delivery methods of how we would deliver a project, given the kind of change in the climate from design bid-build to construction manager at risk, or even design-build. So there's just some options on that, so any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, we need to move sooner rather than later on that. Obviously, they, those folks need some relief.
They do. Mr. Sabatino's nodding his head back there in the corner. He feels comfortable in the corner over there, yeah, the space he's got, yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman, I might also add that Mr. Sabatino's got to find space for about another 40 employees due to the recent Medicaid expansion that the state has either approved or getting ready to approve. They have approved it.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, I've got something kind of interesting. I just wanted to ask permission. So last week, I was made aware of a really terrible accident that happened in the Benson area. A mother and three children were in a collision, and the car actually burst into flames. And four bystanders pulled the mother and three children out of the vehicle, and luckily, they all survived. So after hearing of that, they've been trying to find all the bystanders that helped. And of course, I love that this morning, we've been recognizing all of our people, you know, in the emergency services. And while we know they're wonderful, it was also great to hear of other Johnston County residents that came to the aid of their neighbors. So we are trying to find and identify all of those people that did help. And then I also talked to the county manager to see if maybe we can develop some type of, you know, local hometown hero project, where we recognize those citizens that come to the aid of their neighbors. So I would like to ask permission of the board, I've got some of the phone numbers. If I can reach out to them, I would like for us to publicly recognize those heroes for, for saving some of our neighbors.
I think you can work with Mr. Carroll and Mr. Armstrong on that to make sure that that happens.
And then I also wanted to thank our county manager. He immediately got on the phone, and we are in touch with DOT to do a study on that intersection where several bad accidents have happened, to see if we don't need to go ahead and put in a four-way stop.
All right, thank you. To Mr. Smith?
I have three things, right, and I'm trying to be brief. The first one is kind of a sad thing. It's, it's the second time in the past year that we've had someone who has been a frequent participant in our public comments to pass away, so I would just like to add the family of Joe Preston to our prayers. He came before us many, many times in the last year, year and a half to speak with us. So condolences and prayers for his family. The second issue is the CAMPO, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. With the census, it appears that, it doesn't appear, Clayton and Archillage area, and maybe part of Wilson Mills now is eligible to form their own MPO. I don't have all, excuse me, all the information on that, but I know we'll be hearing from the DOT, I think, next week, or in the next week or so, we'll be hearing from them. Maybe it's this week, we'll be hearing from them.
It's got to be this week, because I think the meeting's on the 13th, and then it won't get another opportunity for 10 years.
Right, so, so there is some discussion on that, and we'll be hearing from the CAMPO representatives as well. So just to make note of the board. And then again, next week, on the 15th and 16th, we have our strategic planning sessions. And just as an aside on that, we will make a formal notice, and I hope I get this right, but we will have a social function at the end of that first day with Commissioners. We'll get, we'll get together for a meal, and we'll have the details on that as we get those worked out. But, so the 15th and 16th, we will be at Campbell University, same location as last year, for that session. So with that, that's all I have, and I think we need a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, I move the board go into a closed session to establish or instruct staff concerning negotiation the prior terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A5 and for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A3.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. We go into closed session for the reasons stated. All those in favor, please say aye. All right, motion carries. And we do not anticipate any action at the end of this, so.